Good morning. Welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Eva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
President.
Councilman Smith is absent today. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson is also absent today. Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings you freely give us. We just thank you for the opportunities to come and to serve you any way that you allow us to, Father. I ask for your blessings on this council, the mayor, his administration, all employees, Father, the great residents of this city. Father, we thank you for all that you have done and promise to do, and just pray that your will is done in every moment, in every instance, in every word that we say, in every thought that we think, Lord. We just pray for your guidance, your direction, that you would provide us with your wisdom and knowledge discernment in all things that lay before us and all things ahead. We give you all the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting held on December 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item 6, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 29th to December 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right. We'll go to item 7, proclamations and commendations. We have none of those today, but we do have some special guests with us today. I would like to invite Gadsden City School Superintendent Keith Blackwell to come forward and he can introduce his guests. Y'all, you may have seen recently, but the City of Gadsden school system did very well with our state report card, and that's the topic of Mr. Blackwell's coming here today. Welcome.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and thank you for this being last minute. I know I called you yesterday, so I do apologize for the last minute, but I can't be here next Tuesday because I'll be in Montgomery, and I'll get to why I had to come today anyway. So, yes, the state report card, without getting into just every subgroup and all the different things that go into a state report card, the system overall made a B, which is an improvement on what we've had the last seven, eight, nine years. It's been a while since we made a B, but we had a lot of schools who did very well. I invited all the principals, those that could come. This time of year, it's kind of tough. You have a lot of programs going on. It's winding schools down, so those that could come, I said come because I got to pull them out tomorrow for something else, but do have four of them here, and a couple, well, I'll go over all four of them. So we've got Chance Goodman from Gadsden Middle, for those of you who know Chance, and he walked in wearing that, and I thought, that's great, here he is in his Christmas outfit. But at Gadsden Middle, they went from a C to a B, so they improved at Gadsden Middle. Mr. Ali Sullivan, who is one of our new principals, some of you may know Ali. Ali's been with us for a while, but he came back to us from Oxford. He's the principal at Adams. Adams went up seven points on the state report card. Mr. Ernest Callaway, principal at Don who. Don who Elementary went from a 71 last year to an 88 this year, which is a huge jump in the state report card.
Fabulous.
And then, Ms. Amanda Martinez, she's the new principal, Your Brown. Your Brown scored 100 on the report card, which there'll probably only be, I haven't seen everybody, every school system, but the last time Your Brown was 100, there were only three of the schools in the whole state that made 100. So I would go ahead and assume that there's going to be a very small amount of schools that make a 100 across the board, so that's big for Your Brown. They'll probably, you know, she'll get to go to Montgomery at some point down the spring in front of the state board to get recognized, so that's big. So we had Thompson Elementary went up eight. You know, the high school went up a few points. We had, you know, so those, that's big achievements. We do this every day, and we deal with what we deal with. You know, we have, you know, the EL populations or special education subgroups, and we work hard with all those groups. So it's a testament to what they do, and it's a testament especially to what the teachers do, to hit that on the state report card. So I wanted you to know, so that you can go by, and I tell y'all this when I come here, you know, if you can go by just to say thank you to the schools within your district, just to say, hey, appreciate what you do. Teachers appreciate what y'all do. And I was telling, I can't say Bishop T., I don't want to get in trouble, but, you know, a couple of county commissioners had reached out saying that they were going to do certain things for some of the schools that reside in their districts, so I thought, well, I don't want the city council to not be in the loop of that. You know, just a little, some, I think one was going to do a little breakfast at one of the schools, just to go by and say, thank you. Litchfield went up. Litchfield has moved up a few points, so it's good for us. But I wanted you as a council to know, and I wish we could have every principal here, but I know how busy they are this time of year, so I wanted you to know that on the state report card. And one of these days, if we have some type of session where we're all together sitting in a room, I could probably break that down for you a little bit better, so you'll understand how a lot of that is judged and determined. And the second thing I want to come by and tell you about was, if you are still, if you're familiar, we had some flyers we put out about Christmas on the falls, you know, for the kids to read books to get AR points. They had about four and a half, five weeks to get 10 points, which is pretty good accomplishment. You know, different books count different points. The larger the book, the bigger the point, but you still have to know the content. You still don't just read the book and say, I read it. You still have to show the teacher that you know the content of the book. So 10 points within that timeframe is good. We set that bar thinking we might get 300, 350 kids, because that's what I told John, because John's already gotten on to me, because we thought it'd be 300, 350 kids, and that kid would receive a ticket to go see the lights plus a pant. So we ended up with 750.
Wow.
So we had 750 kids. So that was going to be this yesterday, but because of the rain, which I'm kind of, we're kind of fortunate that it did rain, because it led to switch gears into two different nights, because along with that is a party in the pavilion, the Quanis Pavilion, which only holds about 300, so we had to break that off. So that's why I wanted to come today. The 16th and the 18th will be the evenings, 5 to 7, where those kids will be at the falls. We've broken it down into three schools one night, five another, just because that's a lot of people at one time if they all choose to come that night. We've also let the parents know and the kids know that you don't have to wait to that night to go see the lights, because we didn't want to just overwhelm on those particular nights, so they can go anytime they want to. They can go, as soon as they get the tickets, which they'll get tomorrow, or they can go during the Christmas break, whenever, but that's big. I mean, that's a lot of kids. So we've learned, you know, dangle that carrot in front of our elementary kids, and they're going to get the books out and start reading, so we're going to do some things in the spring as well, but I just wanted you to know that. You know, they hit a lot of numbers, and I'll go back to Mr. Callaway, you know, he, of the 750, 150 of those were Don who kids. So that's big. But I wanted you to know this, the council, try to keep you informed the best I can, and like I said, maybe there's a day I can get with the mayor, we can come up, we can have one of those meetings where we can break things down for you a little bit more, you know, questions you may have, but I do appreciate what y'all do for us. I know they do, and like I said, I just always ask y'all to please, just if you can, go by those schools, let those teachers know, thank you for what you do, because that means a lot to them. It means a lot to them. So thank you, President, and thank you, council.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. We also have a nice gift for the, and we want to get a picture, I think, Michael, I don't know if I even gave you a heads up. You got a?
I have a camera.
Got a camera, okay. Tina King in the mayor's office has some executive, what do you call those things, Tina?
Portfolios.
Portfolios, we'd like to give, and maybe we could get a picture over there against the wall, Keith, where we normally do pictures?
Yeah, I was going to say too, I'm not going to let them just sit here, because they have work to do.
Right, yeah, and then we could.
We're going to send them back to the schools.
Right.
Do you want to get the whole council?
Yeah, we could. Yeah, we could, yeah, you wanted to just do it up here, then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll get y'all to come up here. And we'll stand. That'll be great.
Eyes on.
Chance, I love the shirt. I love the outfit. That's great. I bet the kids love that.
Thank you.
I bet your students like that. It's good. Ali, congratulations. Congratulations. Mr. Callaway, congratulations.
That's great.
Just Martinez, congratulations.
Thank you. How are you? Okay, sure, okay.
There we go.
One, two, three. One, two.
Thanks, Mike. Thank y'all. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That was good news. We really appreciate what our leadership is doing in our school system. That is outstanding, to hear those results and the hard work that those students have done. It's amazing that 700 and something kids have passed the, or made those points to get the free trip to the falls. That's great.
All right, we'll move on then to item number eight on our agenda, this unfinished business. We have none today. Item nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license. This is Latonya Rutledge, doing business as 7-Eleven, located at 823 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone to speak in opposition? All right, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Good morning, and if you will please, for the record, for Ms. Nelson, if you'll give your name and your address, please.
Yes, I will. Good morning. My name is Marcia Kendrick. My address is 116 North 20th Street, Gadsden, Alabama, 35903. Please excuse my voice, it's going in and out with these sinuses, but I have to keep working with it the best I can.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here this morning to speak on behalf of the alcohol beverage license for 7-Eleven. What we're in the process of doing is, at this time, just trying to get it open, changing managements, changing possibly the name or whatever, but we're trying to do a family-oriented restaurant where families can come in and sit down and have a meal. And you know, a lot of times, people having a meal, they either want something to drink, a mixed drink with their food, or wine or something like that, and that's what we're trying to do, provide that at this location. Under new management, the person's name that was called has really nothing to do with what's going on at this time. We're just in the process of trying to get it situated, get it up and going, and make changes as we go along. We do plan to make all necessary changes that need to be to make this a family-oriented business in the community, wherein everybody can come in and have a seat.
All right, thank you very much.
Any questions? I would appreciate it today if you all would approve of the beverage license. Thank you.
Thank you for coming this morning. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? All right, if not, then the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moving in a second. Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. We'll move to item 10. This is for new business. We do have a few items for new business. If it's okay, we'll start in with Councilwoman Latham in District 1.
Okay, yes, this is from the legal department, 2024. Hopefully by the end of this term, I have it down. Okay, just two years in, I'm still having some problems. This is from the legal department, 2024-979, requested by engineering department document, resolution awarding bid number 3585, Tibetwa and Horton LLC, for the FY 2025 landfill cover dirt project, budgeted to be determined, and this is from account 4307200-442.20-90, and we're asking for the rules to be suspended for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to pass.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Latham. Councilman Avery, I believe you have one.
For today, legal document 2024-982, requested by engineering department, a resolution approving the confidentiality agreement with the ALDOT for the purpose of assessing crash data within the City of Gadsden. And to just give, I guess, context to it, the collection of information on motor vehicles crashes to aid in the development, implementation, and evaluation of motor vehicles and highway safety countermeasures. This requires the agency to protect the privacy of individuals involved in crashes investigated and so on. However, it breaks it local to that our engineering department can assess those local incidents or data, as it helps us to grow the city to, with safety measurements in our communities, neighborhoods, highways, and so forth, as relates to Gadsden. I ask today for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Thank you. I'll ask for consent.
Second.
All right, thank you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
To add to that, there's no cost, so this is, this is something, again, that is getting complete agreement and confidentiality between ALDOT and the city.
All right, thank you. All right, was it Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, I have one. I have one. 2024-980 is requested from the engineering department. It's a resolution authorizing the agreement with LaBella Associates to complete the architectural and engineering service required for the renovations of the municipal court building located at 1511 Campbell Avenue to serve as the new police department. That's pretty explanatory. This is for our new police department. It's budgeted $906,940. I would like to ask the council to suspend the rules and have this requested for today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, thank you. I believe that concludes our new business section, and so we'll go to item 11, department reports, committees, boards. We have any this morning?
I just want to remind each of you to please get me a name for the Arbor Board. I would like to get that board up and functioning sometime around the first of the year. Each city council person will provide me one name from their district that they would like to have on the board.
Thank you for reminding us of that. Thank you. Any other reports, committees? All right, we'll go to remarks by the mayor and council. We'll start in District 7 with Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nice rainy day out there. Everybody be safe. I know Knuckle Falls, I don't know if they're going to be open tonight for Christmas and the lights, but I guess just check your social media page and find out. They'll let you know. Enjoyed hearing from the principals and from the superintendent, Mr. Blackwell, on all those great improvements, what we have going on with the Board of Education. That's awesome news and great news, and I love seeing these guys and loving these guys coming up there and talking to us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minatra?
I just want to remind everyone that the Theater of Gadsden at the Ritz Theater in Alabama City will host Miracle on 34th Street. There are four performances, Friday night at 7:00, Saturday, we'll have 2:00 PM matinee as well as a 7:00 PM presentation, and then Sunday, the 15th, will also be a matinee at 2:00 PM. And tickets may be purchased online at the Theater of Gadsden. I also wanted to announce that our quarterly, as we refer to it, Dumpster Day, will be Saturday, January the 4th, and it will be from 7:00 AM until noon. We had our last event in October. There are going to be three locations. We will have banners to indicate those three locations, but they will be the East Gadsden Community Center, it will be the West Gadsden Sports Complex, and then the YMCA. But we will have other reminders. We also will have a collection of your OutKast Christmas tree, and that will start on the 26th of December and run through Saturday, January the 4th, and all of that will be on the City of Gadsden website. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, all right, I want to give a big shout out to all of those as relates to, one, the Gadsden Christmas Parade, the workers, the participants, and all those families and friends that came out. Also, on this past Saturday, CCRC conducted their, I want to say 15th year Christmas Parade on Tuscaloosa Avenue, and all of those participants, workers, their hard-working efforts, and the participants for that parade as well. Again, a big thank you to all the workers, came out super early, got those streets closed off and everything cleaned up, so very grateful for that and their time taken out to come out and aid us with that. Want to give a big condolences to the Gray family, to Mr. Gray and the twins for the loss of Brandon Gray, and so the city is definitely praying for you. While also, I want to thank housing, Ms. Twana Wilson, and all of those that play a part in the events that are going on in our community housing. There's a lot going on, so taking care of those families that are in need, all of those entities, organizations throughout our city that is working tirelessly and effortlessly to make sure that someone is staying warm, someone is receiving something, you know, and just in a good gesture as relates to the season. You know, we always talk about, you know, the reasons for each season, so just kudos to all of those that are going out and stepping out the extra mile for your neighbor, friends, or someone that you don't know. Now, things I have an issue with, and I'm just going to talk about one real briefly, if I could. There was a shooting this weekend on Avenue F in District 3, and it was pretty much a Fortunately, you're not good of a shoot, a shot that you incidentally hurt someone in your purposeless efforts. And then the unfortunate also is, is that that community, as well as that street, derives of five to six residents that are all seniors, living, trying to live out the end of their, as it relates to their retirement, and they had to be disturbed at 6:00 in the evening with unnecessarily ridiculously amount of gunshots that resulted in a transformer being shot out, power being out, and then you go home to wherever that is, you got heat on, lights and all that stuff, and these people have to stay in that home because of your ignorant gestures that resulted in them sleeping at night in the dark. One lady, we had to remove her from her home and get her a room because she's on a CPAP machine, and she needed that machine in order to sleep. And so, as the police department, the liaison, and I all possibly get together here soon to create some measurements to put in place for this type of activity, I really hope within that timeframe that you find a different and an alternative, I guess, exercise, for lack of terms, and maybe a job. Reach out to me, I'm not hard to find. I'm on Tuscaloosa Avenue pretty much all day if I'm not going to handle some business, but you can definitely find me. And let's talk about some of those things that you're missing within your community, within your circle, that we can work on, and that helps me to fight harder, and then hopefully we can get you in, sit in the audience, or be a part of the agenda to speak on something that will entertain you, or something that you can be involved in. Also, parents, these was young men, young men, I don't think any women was identified, but we couldn't identify them directly, but we know that they were young men. So parents, check on your children. Go into their rooms. I've never lived in a household to where that I can lock my door, close my door on my parent, and my parent couldn't come in my room and check my things. That didn't happen in my household. And so, check your children's belongings for weapons and things of that nature. It is, it is, it is, we're in the winter. We haven't even got deep into the winter yet, and this type of activity has happened. So let's just try to, let's see what we can do with our community activities. We had a coffee with a cop. Again, I thank those that came out. We had great discussions, but, you know, we got to have, if we got to have these more, and if you're going to come out, please, if you have concerns, please come out, make sure that you voice those concerns so that we can try to put measures in place to aid with these type of situations. So the good report is thankfully no one got hurt. However, I'm very, very upset that we had seniors having to sleep in the dark in this cold weather because of just activity that is unnecessary, okay? Nevertheless, as a community, we will have a meeting soon. The community members of that neighborhood is getting it together. I will get it to those leaders that would need a, if they would like to come, but there are, we got to bring a solution to this problem. And so, that's my soapbox. I thank you, to all have a good holiday.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President Back. Let me start by congratulating our school system, Superintendent Blackwell, Assistant Superintendent Maness, and all of the teachers. As a former educator, it really takes a team to see numbers improve like that, and so congratulations on that. And I think, I know with the Education and Recreation Committee, we have some things coming up, but I think that we can provide that forum for them to come and share those numbers with us. Really exciting to hear this, I think it was, which school was it? Don who.
Don who.
Don who, that's where most of the children in District 1 attend, and so congratulations on that. Good to see those improvements, and we look forward to continuing to do what we can as a city council to support our education system. I also want to say it was a wonderful time on, was it Friday night, when we had the tree lighting? It was cold, but it was a good night to the mayor and the mayor's office, and let me just call Mr. Moore, John Moore's name, on a successful first tree lighting. It was awesome. And so, just good to see all the things that are going on in our community, the positive things that are going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Sure, go ahead.
I forgot, I failed to do this, and I do want to thank Gadsden Police Department, and it's definitely a big shout out and very big thank you to Alabama Power, the lineman that came out during that incident. The residents, I just saw a text, and they wanted to definitely make sure that the residents wanted to thank them because they actually came to their house and checked on them and things of that nature, so that was very, they're very grateful for that.
Thank you for doing that. Well, I too want to thank our Gadsden City school system and our students and parents and teachers and administrators for an excellent report card. Anytime you're making progress, that is excellent, and so there's a lot of hard work and a lot of planning that goes into that. It doesn't just happen, and, but at the end of the day, the students have to do the work. So congratulations to our students and those families and parents that are working hard, because it doesn't all just happen between, you know, 7:30 and 3:00. I mean, as we all know, we've all been in school, it happens when you go home. So thank you for everybody for pitching in just to make it a great report card. I want to also echo the sentiments on our Christmas activities, the City of Gadsden is responsible for. The tree lighting was phenomenal. was phenomenal. Gaston State Show Band and Gaston State Show Choir are just, y'all, every time I hear them, they're just better and better. They are really, really good. We are blessed to have a community college in our city, but we're blessed to have such talented young people that are, are, are part of that. So they really added a great touch to it. Live entertainment, and it was so cold. Just couldn't believe how, how cold it was. But it was, it was Christmas time, I guess. And then there was also a group of, of guys that played, they, I think at one time called, Michael, what was it, Downtown Horns? Is that who y'all are?
Gaston Christmas Brass Band.
Oh, Gaston. Well, I'm, I'm a few decades behind. Gaston Christmas Brass Band. Well, y'all were great and really added a lot to that. That was a nice volunteer army that you guys have assembled. They're very accomplished. And Howell Matthews, our public works director is part of that group, along with Michael Rogers in our public affairs office. So there were, and many others that, if I start naming, I'll get in trouble, went to high school with most of them. So really grateful and thankful for their volunteerism and their talent. This time of year, y'all, there's a lot of help going on in our city. You see it all the time on social media. If, if, if you're able, please help the groups that are helping those that are less fortunate. There are so many churches and so many organizations that are doing so many nice things. Our own Gaston Fire Department with the Toys for Tots and the things that they do, and our police department, and the Fraternal Order of Police, and the list goes on and on. The Quanis Club, various churches. Please, if you can respond and help, please do so. There's a lot of people, this isn't a great time of year for them. So it's the mark of a, I think, thriving and caring community is how we care for those that are less fortunate. And from what I'm seeing, we're doing an excellent job. Our community is, is responding to those needs. And in that vein, Salvation Army will be having a roadblock next Saturday, or this coming Saturday, December 14th, at the Gaston Mall from 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock. And y'all, the Salvation Army is the only, has the only overnight shelter in a five county area. That shelter historically has not, does not remain full. It's been full for over three years. I think COVID has a little bit to do with that, the pandemic. But the budget has been really decimated and, and, and there's just a, a large need. Houses around 34 beds. There's cots that are put out from time to time, especially when, you know, it's, it's a warming center. So try not to turn anyone away when that happens, but you have to feed people. And so on top of those residents that are fed, walk-ups are also fed every day. So any kind of help you can give on December 14th, or really any other time, there's a lot of mail outs that go out on behalf of Salvation Army, which was established in Gaston in 1915. So it's been here well over 100 years. So we look for any kind of help you can provide to any of these organizations. But when you see us Saturday with our red buckets, please, please reach deep and, and try to help. So we can help the least of these, which is the, which is the common phrase of the Salvation Army. Y'all, it's been a good day. We are going to get out early today, it looks like. Want to pray for our two council members that are under the weather and those that might be traveling. And we will see you guys back here next Tuesday. Have a great day.